And then I call to order the PM session of the special. For this committee. So please keep the video feature on Zoom during the meeting and. Please make sure you use the virtual background on Zoom to show the white color background. The purpose of the meeting is to consider the 2022, 2023 draft estimates, to ensure that the amount sought would not exceed. What is necessary for implementing the relevant policies? And may I remind you that all questions must be related to the estimates? And please quote the reply serial number on the top right hand corner when you speak. For example, FHB, FEO one. And if the administration is unable to respond to your question today, they should provide a written reply afterwards. Depending on the number of members waiting to speak, I would determine the speaking time for each member. So to be there, please, would the staff remove the raise hand feature now? So. All right, please have clear all the raise hand feature. All right, well, members who intend to speak, press the raise hand feature of soon now. All right. This is some Minister of the Secret Secretary for Innovation Technology and his team. Secretary, please. Chairman members. The current government is committed to promoting the development of innovation technology. We have been implementing a series of measures along the eight major areas and already committed over $130 billion. For continuing to enhance the INT ecosystem in Hong Kong. The budget this year has committed more resources, especially on supporting technology companies, promoting research and development, promoting commercialization of our India results. Facilitating digital economy development, encouraging technology application to further strengthen Hong Kong's IT ecosystem. I will give a brief overview of the various key measures in the budget as follows. On supporting technology companies, the government has long been offering comprehensive assistance to startups at the different stages of development. Through various investment funds, it is announced in the budget that a five billion strategic tech fund STF will be set up under the Hong Kong growth portfolio. STF will be dedicated to invest in a technology enterprise of strategic value, considerable scale and more defined potential shows to reach the INT ecosystem of Hong Kong. We are doing a preparation where we invite the Hong Kong Science and Technology Policy Corporation to identify investment opportunities. On promotion of R and D, we have earmarked $10 billion to provide more comprehensive support online and have services conquered the long run with the aim of enhancing our capacity and capability. In life and health services, including setting up of the, you know, my health tech hub in Hong Kong Center Innovation Technology. Also double the amount of annual subsidy for the 16 state laboratories in Hong Kong. The six Hong Kong branches of Chinese National Engineering Research Centers. So they have more resources to conduct our activities, nurture local talent as well as attract more local and non-local INT talents and further their cooperation exchanges or institutions, the mainland. The budget also announced that a subsidy for the technology startup support scheme for universities doubled to start up the promotion of commercializing our India results. The increased subsidy will be provided to startups of universities with private investment on a matching basis, one to one. Each startup may receive an annual matching subsidy of up to $1.5 billion for maximum of three years. Digital economy is already a global trend. In the light of the COVID pandemic and experience of dispersing consumption vouchers last year, electronic payment and consumption have become more popular. The budget announced that the Digital Economy Development Committee will set up to accelerate Hong Kong's progress of developing digital economy and digital transformation in different industries. On encouraging technology adoption, the budget announced that $600 million have been reserved to conduct a comprehensive e-government audit in the coming three years. With a view of regaining progress made by departments using technology as well as existing them in enhancing the efficiency of public service provision through the adoption of I N T solutions. I D B and another bureau of departments also continue to expedite the application of I N T in respective fields to enhance services. Apart from implementing the measures put forward in the budget, I T B will present ahead with six. With other key tasks and clean pressing ahead of infrastructure projects and large Hong Kong scientific tool. With a series of initiatives continue to promote reindustrialization in Hong Kong, continue to implement a smart city blueprint for Hong Kong 2.0. To benefit the general public with the convenience brought about by technology adoption in their daily lives. And unprecedented new era has been ushered in for Hong Kong scientific development. The national 145-year plan to place indicates clear support Hong Kong's development into an international INT hub. Want to go to Hong Kong Macau, GBA development has brought enormous opportunities for Hong Kong scientific development. We see the current good momentum for Hong Kong and build on a process to press ahead. I would like to thank members again for their support all along. I feel that continuous support members and the public for the work of our bureau. Thank you. Thank you. I will now return the speaking order. Yes. Give me a moment. Mr. Chen Hafeng, Mr. Rock Chen, Ms. Next Cee Lam, Ms. Carmen Khan. Ms. Michael, Mr. Lam Chee Yun, Mr. Yung Tha Sun, Mr. Dan Kapiu, Mr. Dick Chee Yun, Mr. Jimmy. Mr. Elizabeth Kwang Chau Man Kwong Ma Hong Fong, Sun Dong Lee Wai Man, Gichon Prisilla La. Right, the first speaker is Mr. Chen Hafeng, four minutes, please. Thank you. I'd like to follow up on my own question. Question, I T B O one. Now. According to the reply from the administration, usually is in on September that term starts. And then universities may discuss whether the professors, whether there have been new contracts. And according to the paper, some of the approved cases may not be able to come now. We are already in the middle of April. Has the government done anything to help them? According to the administration. Over sixty overseas scholars have been, have received support in the first two trenches of the scheme. However, the arrivals are not that satisfactory. After impression that once approved, it will be for the institution's concern to see that these scholars arrive in Hong Kong. I don't think that this is the right way to treat. Scholars, can the administration be more involved to help universities? Or to see what problems have encountered in recruiting scholars and what can be done to help? Another question is I T B O three two. Now, according to the reply, Ino South in was established in twenty two. Oh, however, the occupancy rate is only seventy four percent. I'd like to know the reason for the low utilization rate. We always want to attract more talents to Hong Kong and they need quarters. How can we attract more talents to come to Hong Kong and they can make good use of our facilities so that they will not be left idle? Thank you. I thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chen, for your question. I thank Mr. Chen for his concern for our efforts to attract scholars to Hong Kong. Now, as said by Mr. Chen, we have gone through two rounds of assessment. And sixty scholars coming to Hong Kong in two trenches, trenches. In June 2021, the program was launched. And we have had very good response. We have now started the third trench. In the first two trenches, sixty scholars have indicated their willingness to come to Hong Kong. As you may know, these distinguished scholars may be carrying out important R and D projects. And they have to settle their things there before they can arrive in Hong Kong. We are pleased to see say that the sixty scholars. Have, or at least over dozen of them have arrived in Hong Kong and they have, they are gradually joining our INT industry. In terms of. Our economic conditions and also the ecosystem provided by our universities. I think that they're very attractive and our universities have provided very good supporting measures. And as for Ino Cell, as said by Mr. Chen, the occupancy rate is about seventy four percent. Because INT as an industry has also been affected by the pandemic. Seventy four percent of occupancy rate is quite considerable. I'm sure things will continue to improve after the pandemic. Ms. Rock Chen. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to pull up on a reply I T B O one four. Also on talents in INT. I'm pleased to hear from the secretary, the sixty scholars have agreed to come to Hong Kong. But in my liaison of the industry, I have observed another trend. Our anti-academic measures have post constraints for talents to come to Hong Kong. And some of them are not willing to work in Hong Kong. If we want to be an INT hub as well, we have the INT Venture Fund and also the Private Equity Fund, etc. I think they are important aspects of INT. But from some of the funds, I know they have already lost some of the talents to other countries. This is a trend. And this is not conducive to. At the development of the Hong Kong Shenzhen Guangdong INT corridor. So face of these challenges, what measures and policy does the administration have to attract? Local and overseas INT talents to come to work in Hong Kong? How can we foster closer cooperation among Hong Kong Shenzhen and Guangdong in I, on INT front? Secretary, thank you. I think the points made by Mr. Chen are very close to our hearts as well. Because of the pandemic in the last two years, in our livelihood and economy have been dealt a blow. And INT is no exception. In the past two years, we have been trying very hard to use government measures to encourage the development of INT. And among them, we are trying to attract talents to work in Hong Kong. Now, we have the. We have the. And we've also got Inno Hong Kong, we've got the Global STEM Professorship Scheme. And through international connections of our universities. Many world-renowned universities and R and D institutions have come to Hong Kong, twenty eight of them. Or in working in life sciences and robotics. They have already projects in Hong Kong. The establishment of these laboratories will help us to attract local and overseas INT talents. Now, we have the Global STEM Professorship Scheme to attract talents. We've also got a joint laboratory for saying I mean, Hong Kong. And thousands of INT talents have been attracted to come to Hong Kong. Of course, because of the pandemic, some of them have rather chosen to stay in their respective. Places, it may come later, but we will work hard to attract them. Once we can attract more capital to Hong Kong. Past few years. Would be very successful in attracting ones to Hong Kong in twenty fourteen. We succeeded in attracting 1.24 billion money in INT to Hong Kong. And the amount grew to 41.7 billion last year. So we are doing quite well and we will step up our efforts. And we will enhance cooperation with our institutions in GBA in particular.
Thank you. I'd like to ask about reply serial O one three. So it is mentioned that by 2022, then. Then all licenses other than the legal licenses could be done electronically. And now you will be able to apply in electronic manner, but now we are already in the second quarter of 2022. So would you really be able to do this? And I T B zero five six. So the government said that it's about eighty six billion on the home safe app. So I going to continue to optimize this app. Many of our legislators have already mentioned many times that it's very important to improve the tracking function. Or at least to make the tracking function or on the leave home safe app, how are we going to add in the health code into leave home set? At the end of February, we've already started using the vaccine pass. But now we have over millions of Hong Kong people infected. We still can then track the confirmed patients. The government always said that it's a smart city, but then you need to still require the residents to hold a paper infection or certificate. So would that be a bit too slow? Thank you, Ms. Lam, for your reminder. And in mid-year, other than due to. Legal issues, we are going to move to digitalizing. Many of our processes in the past few years, we have already. Been successful in. Many things, we now have over seven hundred services and over three hundred license application can be done via. A digital manner. And by mid-year, we're going to further enhance it. I can supplement. Currently. Well, this Lam asks us whether we are confident, we are confident that we'll be able to achieve our goal. We estimated. That we will be able to achieve our goal and now we have already achieved it by twenty eighty percent. So we are confident that we'll be able to reach our goal by mid-year. And Ms. Lam also asked about the vaccine pass and the leave home safe app. The leave home safe app is to assist with us fighting the pandemic. We are now able to track via the leave home safe app. Simply put, when you arrive at designated premises, you only need to. Use the leave home safe app and then the premise operator will be able to. Screen the vaccine and therefore will be able to have a real person tracking function via this app. And we're continuing going to enhance the leave home safe app. We are now making arrangements for confirmed cases. We hope that by early next month, we'll be able to. Achieve arrangements to ensure that. Confirmed. Patients will be able to have their own QR code to convenient them in entering premises. Thank you. Next to Ms. Carmen Khan. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on my question, which is reply zero number I T B O five three. In the next few years, our government said that they're going to give 600 million in. In auditing, in auditing. And so the government will be able to restructure to make certain deployments. And therefore, you would need. To have many changes. So you would actually wait till then before you move to a e-government audit. Secondly, we now are proving 600 million, but then the government's response. Is looking into how you can make it more convenient. I'm sure that, of course, with a sharing of data, you'll be able to make it more convenient. We need to focus on how you're going to do, do that. Currently, the I M Smart function, you only have about one million users. Well, we've been distributing consumption vouchers and cash payout, but we haven't linked it up to I M Smart. When are you going to give the incentive for all seven million residents to use the I M Smart? If we're able to have a full data interchange, then that would be much more convenient. I think the Audit Commission should be, should take the initiative to try to compare how other countries do that. And to ensure that there would be a comprehensive experience for everyone. The central government. Has made many instructions or given guidelines on digitalization. I believe that we should draw reference from that and also on the Digital Economy Act from the UK. In the act, it permits government departments to share data and to make data interchange. I believe that the administration should come to Ledge Co. to set up a structure and to ensure that we'll be able to have full data interchange. Professor Liang Wan Yan. Already. Suggested that we are not able to use big data analysis to track confirmed cases. Does the e-government audit also include a safe data vetting? So last month, if you remember, around fifteen million rest user information was leaked out. And it also allows employees to work at from home during this time. I followed up with the Electoral Commission and found that three hundred employees actually worked from home. And while checking such confidential data. I would like the administration to reply how we are going to draw up legislation to ensure that we'll be able to have full data interchange. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Khan, for your reminder. Or as Ms. Khan has kindly reminded us. We actually do a broad scope of work other than doing auditing work. We also draw reference from other countries to ensure that we'll be able to brainstorm and also to learn from other countries' experience. Therefore, the reply is affirmative. Of course, we would start with such an audit. We do not have to wait till the completion of the restructuring before we can move on to a e-government audit. Even though we do have division of work in our different departments, we'll be able to comprehensively enhance our structure digitally. And therefore, based on services from each department, we would earmark resources to do that. And thank you, Ms. Khan. Of course, we are going to look at it to see whether. The data interchange could be. Done as soon as possible. But then for the issues at the EAC, I don't think it is a problem with data interchange. And some colleagues. May, when they are working from elsewhere, may have because of some loopholes at disclose certain information. Well, I can add on to that. Some departments provide public services and we would see whether they could enhance their services by doing the e-government audit. And Ms. Khan mentioned data interchange amongst our departments. We are working on detailed analysis. And for more simple areas of concern, we have already started looking into it. But for more deep-rooted problems, we would see whether we could iron out the details. And of course, we would hope for the support of all legislators. Next, Mr. So Chuen Wen. Thank you. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on I T B O O four on the. One hundred thirty billion. On the ecosystem. Well, currently, we. We see that through your hard work. We are going to leverage on our competitiveness to continue with the, our IT development. But then we still need to look into other areas of development. I'd like to ask about the. Whether this 130 billion will be able to ensure that we would retain talent. According to the Hong Kong U research. Fifty eight percent of interviewed enterprises find it hard to recruit. A pro, talents, and that's already a seventeen percent over the mainland. Would you consider trying to increase the number of spaces in universities and provide them with incentives? To stay in Hong Kong after graduation to work in the IT sector? And secondly, in recruiting. Overseas talents to enhance our competitiveness. And to provide them with accommodation for eligible IT. Workers so that they would find it. More attractive to come to Hong Kong. And thirdly, to. Provide more attacks. Concessions or benefits so that we could be a step ahead of Shenzhen. Would you try to speed up working with the mainland? To ensure that we would have better IT strategy. For example, to have the intellectual property protection or will. And that we will be able to also to share our intellectual property with the mainland. Thank you, Mr. So, for your points. That is current, those are all currently in line with our strategy. We fully agree that. Attracting talents are very important. We are going to nurture local talents and also to attract overseas talents into Hong Kong. Through different schemes and with the support of Ledge Co. From primary school to secondary school to universities. There are different schemes to nurture local talents. For example, after graduating from university, students who are interested in joining R and D. Would be able to find. A three-year support. And. So for PhDs who are interested through the research talent hub. They will also be able to have about thirty two thousand per month. As for taxes, in the past few years, we have actually made enhancements. So any enterprise who works in R and D in Hong Kong, the first two million, there could be a three percent tax deduction. And this deduction can be carried on after the first three years until they make a profit. And for the synergy cooperation with the mainland, that is of course very important last year, together with Shenzhen. We, there is a need to work with the GBA to have a. Digital transmission software kit to ensure that we'll be able to enhance our competitive. digital transmission software kit to ensure that we'll be able to enhance our competitiveness. So through working with each other, we'll be able to succeed together. And then we'll also look into people exchange, data exchange, and we hope we'll be able to realize our full potential in the GPA.
Then finally, supplement. Are there still points I'd like to supplement on talents? I can tell you that in Sentin Techno Co., we will reserve land for all types of quarters for talents to suit the need of accommodation. And as for flow of capital now, whether we talk about the Ministry of Technology and Shenzhen and Guangdong Province, we discuss how the flow of these important elements can be more convenient. May I remind you that each member has four minutes for both questions and answers when the timer beeps. So please wind around up in wind up in around thirty seconds. Ms. Ai Tong Kua.
Thank you, Chair. My question relates to ITB oh two four. I'd like to ask how the administration helps Hong Kong to fight the pandemic with technologies. Yes, just yesterday, there was this piece of news. The Poly U University had two point seven billion dollars of subsidy in inventing a portable detector or testing device. Within twenty seconds, twenty minutes, a very accurate result could be available. Unfortunately, very often, these inventors cannot get any commercial sponsorship or subvention, so they cannot commercialize their R and D products. The government is going to invest ten billion dollars to help our INT. So I'd like to ask the secretary, are there any concrete measures to help our outstanding R and T to turn our R and D tenants to turn their products into commercial use? Now, we have various apps for fighting the pandemic, but we cannot achieve our desired effect. For instance, the Stay Home Safe app is not abundant. This is because we cannot have full use of big data. And the major constraint is we are all bound by the concept of privacy. I asked the Privacy Commissioner in LedgeCo not long ago. The commissioner said that, given our fight against the pandemic, privacy should not be a constraint. So have you any plan to review various apps so that we can make good use of big data? Mercy, we need a lot of R and D talents to help, but within Hong Kong, they are not treated as they would like to be. For instance, they have to pay a special damn duty in property purchase. Now, to attract talents, will this secretary lobby the government on their behalf so that they can be given favorable terms when residing in Hong Kong? Thank you, Mr. Li. Yes, I think what Mr. Li said is what we are trying to do as well. We should use our R and D results to help fight the pandemic. I think the government has done a few very good projects. For instance, we are using our resources to assist R and D teams of universities to engage in such research. Hong Kong Poly University has got our support in this regard. And we also allow them to make good use of their R and D results. We have the Public Sector Trial Scheme. To put it simply, when our R and D teams have got results in R and D are using their own or our funds, they can try the products out under the Public Trial Scheme, Public Tracker Trial Scheme. We want to use local R and D to support our fight against our pandemic. I think we have achieved some good results. As regards big data, I agree that we should have optimal use of big data to fight the pandemic. I respect privacy, but then human lives and safety are of paramount importance. As for talents, we also attach significance to this area. We are present ahead, full steam, to help these R and D talents to settle in Hong Kong. Thank you. Mr. Michael Look. Thank you, Chair. Many members are concerned about the commercialization rate of our N D products. How we can turn them into successful more products in the market? Some startups have told me that it's hard to engage in R and D in Hong Kong. I also don't have a lot of subsidy schemes available. He said, yes, the government has been generous. But when it comes to commercialization, the government doesn't support them, nor does the local market. And I think this is a big issue in many places to develop INT. The government must support them. A commercial product of R and D should be supported by the government so that the local market will have confidence in it. And then the products can then market it, be marketed overseas. Now, my question relates to Mr. Cho, Mr. Duncan Cho's question, ITB oh oh seven. Now, we should use our local R and D products. Unfortunately, there is no statistics cap. And I think this is a big discouragement to our R and D person now. Government departments are not supporting these products. Now, the government likes to say that we have the WTO procurement agreement, and therefore, we must be fair. We cannot favor local products. In fact, there is a threshold, only contracts exceeding sixteen million dot one point six million dollars will be bound for contracts worth less than one point six million dollars. I think we can give favorable treatment. We can award extra scores or points to local products. And as for contracts of one point six million dollars, can we give priority to products of our own R and D efforts? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Look, as you said. Well, this term of government in particular, we have happily supported and subsidized the local R and D activities. We provide them with resources for R and D activities at once. And they have R and D products. We have different arrangements to help them to be launched into the market. For instance, with the Public Sector Trial Scheme. And I think the this is in line with Mr. Look's thinking, because they need market to test their product. And we have a public trial, Public Sector Trial Scheme to try out these R and D products to ensure that they are successful. In twenty nineteen, we have got a new procurement policy. Now, in the past, people criticized the government for awarding contracts to the lowest bid, or we will only go for proven products, of course. We should go for reliable products in a prudent manner. But then we have got a new procurement policy. So suggested by Mr. Look, we will support local R and D products. We will use them in government services. This is not a problem. We are already promoting this policy. Mr. Lam Chi Yun.
Thank you. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Sit. I think Mr. Sit and his team are very busy. I'd like to follow up on my own question and also questions by other colleagues. First, ITB oh one one. Mr. Chen Hopper and Mr. Roxanne are quite concerned about the yeah, Global STEM Professorship Scheme. They would like to know the number of scholars that have arrived. I'd like to know from what fields are they from, because that can have an impact on our INT developments. And this relates to a question asked by Ms. Lexi Lam in ITB oh thirteen. That is about the Digital Economy Development Committee. When I asked about financial service, the financial services sector, the question was answered by the FS and TB. So I'm concerned about innovation in the financial services sector should be something for the ITB or the FSTB, for instance. My alma mater, Hong Kong U S T, has an advantage in this regard. So why should I not discuss her with Mr. Sit or another bureau? And to follow up on Mr. Li's question, in Singapore, they have an app similar to reform save. They have a tracking function. And the success rate is ninety percent. And as a result, they have fewer deaths than we do in the pandemic.
Ms. Chu, it's also concern about the decoration system for people tested positive using our AT. So how can we do better? In particular, when more than one department is involved, how can we move more expeditiously? Because we are all eager to save lives. Thank you. Now, for the Global STEM Professor Scheme, Professorship Scheme, a lot of fields are involved. I can give you supplementary information later. Now, I've discussed with the various bureau directors in different sectors, we should use technology to enhance our capacity. So whether we talk about financial services, logistics, and tourism, I think they all should use technology to upgrade their capability. So all bureau directors are willing to use technology to upgrade their respective industries. Now, we have the Sapa Port, we have the Hong Kong Science Park. They will develop our N D products for use by different bureaus to fight the pandemic and also R and D products by universities. They should also be commercialized. And R and D products should be commercialized. And we should make it more popular. We have got a download rate of seven point eight million and over six point two million of people have already been vaccinated.
Mr. Duncan Chu, good afternoon, Chairman. Good afternoon. Secretary, I'd like to ask about ITB four, five, six, seven. Oh, in the budget, we see that there is now more allocation for the sixteen Chinese National Engineering Research Centers. And we are very grateful to see that there is an increase in allocation. And so we now have more funding for R and D. But even though there is such an increase and you look at R and D, we only account for zero point nine nine percent for R and D. I remember we do have a government as a pledge of one point five percent. So there's still a huge cap. In the past few years, we have already already invested around one hundred thirty billion or so. But we see that only twenty odd percent is put in R and D. So R and D is one issue. And secondly, on talents, well, the industry is very concerned about talents. It's very difficult to recruit good talents. And so two plans are very important. The Global STEM Professor Scheme is one of them. So we already have sixty people joining this scheme. But then we know that many of them do not show up. The other is Equality Migrant Scheme. There is about six hundred fourteen quota and only two hundred eighty-three applicants have been approved. So I have four questions. First, on the R and D expenses in the upcoming years, how are we going to catch up? But because we're not, we haven't reached the one point five percent pledge yet, how can we invest more in R and D? Or we talk about the ten billion of in Hong Kong, I wouldn't accept it. I'm talking about other high-tech projects such or other major enterprises, Huawei, in the last year invested about one hundred forty billion RMB. And secondly, on the Global STEM Professorship Scheme, some people did not show up. Would we set a deadline? Or let's say, your application has been approved for two years. And if you don't show up, do we have to suspend that? And then to recruit other people or to invite other applicants to invite people from other countries to join the scheme? And thirdly, on the Equality Migrant Scheme, only two hundred eighty-three applications have been approved. We do lack many people at this moment. How are we going to catch up with the number of talents? Can we actually relax the criteria? Or can we expand the scope of the IT sector so that we'll be able to attract more people to come in? And then for in no cell, I see that there is a huge demand. It shows that we do need that to attract more talents. And when we are going to invite more new talents, we talked about a San Tian. How are we going to build more accommodation for them? It takes time to provide adequate housing. Thank you. Let me take the first two questions, and then I would ask the PS to take the other two. On R and D expenses, the government has been investing hugely in R and D, which is actually unprecedented. Or other than government investment, we also need to attract a private investment. As such, we also support infrastructure, because with infrastructure, we'll be able to attract private investment. And I do agree with you to invite more people to join the Global STEM Professorship Scheme. We're happy to welcome them early, if but if they are not able to arrive in Hong Kong yet, for those talents that are in huge demand, we're willing to wait. PS, can you take the other questions? I'll just be brief. The these two schemes are actually have been hugely affected by the epidemic. And therefore, we have seen less people join the scheme. We do not know how we have the economy is. Therefore, for the Global STEM Professor Scheme and the Technology Talent Admission Scheme, we really hope that it would improve after the epidemic. We now have expanded to thirteen fields. And if you have comments on which other fields we should include, then we are happy to hear that. We know there is a huge include, then we are happy to hear that. We know there is a huge demand for in no cell. We are now looking into providing more in no cells in San Tian. We are still thinking of ways to see whether we could increase more other than the San Ten Tech Hall. Mister Bill Tang, thank you, Chairman. My question is on O five nine on the Leave Home Safe App or the Vaccine Pass. I'd like the secretary to clarify a few points according to the most updated figures on the from the Department of Health. So about six point two three million have already received a vaccine. So I want to see whether they are all using the vaccine pass, which means that I've already uploaded the vaccination records onto the Leave Home Safe App. If not, how many people still have not done it? And what is the reason for not doing it? Is it because they do not want the Leave Home Safe App to be linked with the vaccine certificate? Or because they are very old and may not own a smartphone? Secondly, now you must use the vaccine pass to enter restaurants or other designated premises. So it's sort of like a semi wheel person tracking. I want to know. So if I have a question on how many people have entered a restaurant for lunch, would you be able to provide me with a figure? You'll be able to monitor or track these figures immediately. And thirdly, in the fifth wave, has the Leave Home Safe App been paralyzed? Because there was a time when there were no notifications sent. So would this happen again when the sixth wave comes? Thank you, Mister Tang, for your question. This is the way how I see the Leave Home Safe App and the Vaccine Pass. So six point two three million people have already been vaccinated. And therefore, they already own a vaccine pass. So they would receive a paper certificate after taking the vaccine. And there's a Q R code, which is already the vaccine pass. The e-Health and the Leave Home Safe Help is just convenience you to upload it onto the Leave Home Safe App. So so all these six million people already have a vaccine pass. We do not know how many people do not upload it onto the app. Some people are not willing to do that. Some people would rather hold the paper record. We do not have figures on that. As to whether the Leave Home Safe App will be paralyzed, once again, I want to say that the Leave Home Safe App continues to help people record their whereabouts. We suspended a service temporarily in the notifications only because during that time, no notifications were sent to the Leave Home Safe App. Because resources were put in testing during that time, with the increase in testing, the notification function was just suspended temporarily. So the vaccine pass can help us track people when there are many infections in a restaurant. If you remember the case in Moon Palace, we didn't know who visited the restaurant, but with the vaccine pass, we are able to then check who has patronized the restaurant during the same period, and it can help us with tracking. Thank you. Thank you. Doctor Tik Tiyu. Thank you, Chairman. Secretary, I'd like to ask about the ge-geol technology. We have an aging population and therefore geotechnology is very important. And the elderly can really enhance their lifestyle with technology. We understand, however, that the government and the social welfare organizations call geotech forums and exhibitions every now and then and to assist them in enhancing I T use. It has been quite some years. But do the elderly really make good use of our technology? Many elderly people do not know how to use Leave Home Safe App, and therefore they are not able to visit wet markets. You see instead smaller shops nearby, the wet markets have become more popular because they do not know how to use it and do not know how to pay electronically. The elderly also do not know how to make a booking for doctor appointments or to make online purchases. Many of the elderly actually cannot follow all this new technology. It seems we still have a long way to go before we can really achieve success in geotechnology. It is now essential to use electronic devices such as computers. How can we make use of that to improve their lifestyle such as robots to assist them in elderly homes? And we can help them upgrade their technology. And so that technology can be standardized and be applied in elderly homes and to make taking care of them more easily. Can geotechnology be more linked up with technology? Do you have some targets? And which departments are actually working on such implementation? And what are the resources you have for the elderly? So that you'll be able to support the elderly to use technology in their lives. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Doctor Tik, for your question. There are two main areas. First of all, to use technology to support the elderly in their daily lives and in elderly homes to improve their lifestyle. And geotechnology can also assist elderly homes to apply new technology such as enhancing the working environment. So these are all included in our support. So we do have N G Os assisting us on this end. Secondly, to lead the elderly or to teach them to use new technology such as making use of smartphone to use the Leave Home Safe App. How can we help them to apply such technology in their lives? The O G C I O has different schemes and via different platforms to help the elderly to make good use of technology. Oh, Chairman, I don't really have much time. I hope you'll be able to give us a written response. I really hope that the government will support this.
Secretary, yes, I'm more than happy to provide more information to the council, including how we can assess our elderly persons to use a geran technology. All right. Thank you. Mister Yan Kong, my question raised to I T B O three three, and thank the bureau for giving me a very detailed reply to follow up. Now, apart from our support to R and D institutions, what about the Hong Kong X and S F C? How are they going to have a series of supporting measures so that I N T enterprises can join the a gem board and so that there can be more room for financing for them? Now, by adjusting the listing rules, we allow pre-revenue and pre-profit I N T enterprises to be listed. I think this is already a new platform. We are now the world's first and the second Asian listing place for these enterprises. Well, apart from I N T enterprises engaged in life and health sciences, will we be bold enough to expand the scope? My answer to Mister Yan is for sure. We will promote the development of this area. Thank you, Mister Ronic Chan. Thank you, Chairman. I've got two questions. It's about I T B O one seven and O five three, and that is about audit of government e-services. Six hundred million dollars, million dollars are set aside for that, and it will be done by a contractor. There are government e-services with very low utilization rate. So can a government conduct an internal review first? After all, audit involves costs. So for services that have very low usage, they should be abolished first so that we can narrow down the scope of audit. And according to the reply, the audit will look at the the easier easelessness in use, and will you consider whether the maintenance cost is also affordable? And when it comes to e-services, will you include things like H A Go and My Observatory? And the second question relates to I T B O one four. I N T companies, while Mister Duncan Chu is not satisfied with the occupancy rate of seventy percent for in no cell, but then secretary, when you came for funding, you said that it would be oversubscribed. And all the spaces would be taken up as soon as they were launched. This is far cry from what is happening now. So I'd like to know whether it is because of brain drain. People have moved out that we have still some vacancy. Or have you reserved some spaces for designated groups to enhance our attractiveness? All right, the third question is about in no cell. I would defer to the P S. The first question, the first part of your question is about an audit of e-government services. We will conduct a value for money project for that. Even before the audit, we have two plans in the government. That is a smart regulation and also a ways and be a smart regulator and also easier government services. Now, in twenty twenty, the scheme cover over three hundred departments and a lot of government services. Now for that audit, I N T development is so advanced that we must have a comprehensive and complete way of tackling things. We have reserved six hundred million dollars, but we have never stopped in reviewing government offices to make them smarter and even simpler. Well, the audit will not just look at our apps and whether the usage rate is high, rather it will include the workflow and services of the whole department. The apps are just part of the system. And as for in no cell, if not for the epidemic, I can guarantee that it will be very full. We have short-term contracts and visitors using in no cell, but because of the epidemic, they have shelved their plans without the epidemic. I am quite confident that once the epidemic is over, the occupancy rate will soar. Mister Jimmy, thank you, Chair. I'd like to put up on question on reply I T B O four four. That is about the progress of in no Hong Kong research clusters. Now, we're told that we will determine the third, the direction of the third cluster taken into account factors such as the operational experience of the first two research clusters. I think the reply is quite similar to what we got in the past. Does that mean that there is not much progress for the third cluster? Well, for the first two research clusters, they were launched in the past couple of years, but because of the pandemic, for sure, they have encountered challenges. So for the third research cluster, perhaps we can pause and review the operation of the first two research clusters before we proceed. And that is why in the past two years, we feel that before the development of the third in no Hong Kong research cluster, we should pause and review the operation of the first two research clusters. But we have not stayed put in terms of promoting I N T under the forty-five-year plan. We can engage in life and health sciences. So in the innovation zone in at the loop, we can continue to press ahead now. Although we are still thinking about the third cluster, does that doesn't mean that we have stopped our further promotion. We will see how we can contribute to I N T development in Hong Kong. Mister Chen Zhou Hang, thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up on I T B O two nine is my own question. The reply said that the I N T Bureau will be retitled as the Innovation Technology and Industry Bureau. We know that we are going to have a new C E for the next term of government. So I'd like to learn from the secretary whether we can have more information on the constitution of the Innovation and Technology and Industry Bureau so that we can have a better plan. And we can be informed as to the direction in this area. In reply number three, reindustrialization, I've always wanted to ask for a definition of reindustrialization. And what I heard is a high-value added and advanced manufacturing sectors. But Hong Kong have strength, has strengths in our conventional industries. We have a global influence, but manufacturing really rarely takes place in Hong Kong. But we have R and D in materials, logistics and management, etc., although the manufacturing base may be in Southeast Asia. So given the background, how in reindustrialization, we can give room to further development? give room to further development of our conventional industries? And the third is I T B O six three. The Hong Kong M A has really completed the third version of I'm Smart six point three, the business version of I'm Smart platform. So I'd like to know the progress and when can we have a timetable and how we can participate in that. Oh, G C O will take the third question, and then the second question is about re-industrialization, for sure, we'll cover our very successful conventional industries in Hong Kong. As that, we have different industries and they need upgrading using technology. Mr. Tan was very correct in saying that for the whole industry chain, only the areas involving technology and view edit aspect can take place in Hong Kong. We should adopt a smart production and we're not saying that the whole production chain of all products must take place in Hong Kong. This is unrealistic. This is not our aim, we will cooperate with our neighboring cities with the establishment of the new government. In consultation with the new C E, we will consult the council before deciding how the restructuring should be implemented. Would you say? Thank you. Our cooperation with the Hong Kong M A covers a lot of areas, including security, the sandbox testing and the required legislation and also regulatory aspect. So we will discuss with Hong Kong M A what the timetable will be when we have further developments, we will let members know. Thank you. Miss Elizabeth Quat, thank you, Chair. Technology maps our future and it can also improve the quality of life faced with the global pandemic and also an aging population. Technology can be deployed to help us solve a lot of questions. Now, without health code, you can imagine how the mainland could control the pandemic. And even for vaccines and drugs, they are all the products of technology. Of course, we want wider application of technology in Hong Kong. We want our own health code of a tracking function, so that we can be well-prepared for another wave of outbreak. So you said that we should focus on lives and health and on research in these areas. Have my full support. I think we have some competitive at here and many scholars and experts have voiced out our difficulties. For instance, life materials cannot flow between Hong Kong and the mainland, and some of the scientific equipment cannot flow between the two places. I think that this will impact on our development in life and health sciences. So can you see how we can overcome this? And as for genetic that diagnosis, I think we are developing very rapidly, and we have companies engaged in this in Science Park. But for genetic diet diagnosis, now the main shareholders cannot be a non-resident in Hong Kong. Now, we have from putting a lot of resources if we have got R and D products and services, and if we cannot provide these services in the main end, that means we cannot have for the main market. And it's hard for Hong Kong R and D companies to find investors. They have to find a way out, so you should address this.
In the future, how are we going to work with the loop? How can we help registered companies in Hong Kong? Or those who are working in in no life to enter the mainland market? And since the G B A development is so important, we're talking about nine plus two in the Greater Bay Area. And there are also many different kinds of in old tech funds over there. Can we also work with them? I hope to see the opening of such doors. I think I've talked about this for a very long time, but we haven't seen any huge step forward. Thank you, Ms. Quat. You have given us many valuable comments. How do we make use of the G B A advantage? We must work on different kinds of interchange and connect such as assets, materials, etc. For facilities, we can already conduct an interchange through different platforms. And we've already spent around six hundred twenty billion, a million, and we are going to work in people funding facilities and data exchange. We can also be more pragmatic and to make changes, so that Hong Kong scientists can become the main legal entity, and this is something we're going to discuss with the mainland. Thank you. Mr. Chairman Call, thank you. I'd like to follow up with I T B O three eight on the finance scheme to help universities to try to commercialize their products instead startups, and there have been about one hundred and twelve that have been successful. So that's about sixty-four percent that can commercialize their research products. And so this is much more than before, and but then I was still lacking behind what the authorities through this technology startup support scheme for universities to help them with their continuation in their research. I would like to know about the operations of such startups right now. Do you know what's happening with the remaining thirty-six percent? Those that are not able to succeed, what kind of difficulties are they encountering? And what kind of support would you be able to give them? In the past, the administration has appropriated around eight million support each year for in no and tech activities and events. Would you provide more support to help them in a small product manufacturing? Or how are you going to further support them? Thank you for your questions. In this year's budget, we have already estimated that more funding would be given to the T S S S U from eight million to sixteen million, which is doubling the investment. We do want private companies to participate as well. Therefore, we have also set up a matching scheme to attract more private enterprises to join in. So this is a one-to-one matching fund. I can provide you with a written response on some of the difficulties encountered. But I would like to talk some more about the success of this technology startup support scheme for universities. One hundred seventy-six startups have made success with over a thousand five hundred patents. So altogether, that's two hundred ninety-three companies, and two hundred sixty-one of them have been supported in funding, and we're talking about attracting of funds of about nine hundred fifty million. And one hundred ninety-one of them have already become listed. So this is some success indicators, but we are going to increase our funding, so that more products and more patents will come out from this scheme. Mr. Chow, sixty-four percent of them had their products commercialized, and that's very encouraging for us. We didn't expect so many, because these are startups during the university stage. The failure rate is really high. But they've been doing well so far. There are some reasons leading to certain failures, because these are startups, and of course, we'd see a high failure rate. Mr. Ma Fengqiao, thank you. I'd like to follow up with I T B O four one, which is my own question. This is not the first year I am facing such a question in the reply. So there've been about four thousand eight hundred eighty-seven applications for the technology voucher program. And only one point eight percent were approved. So in general, one point eight percent is not very high. And we see about eight percent for some of the general applications. This is not a very ideal number, because there's only such a small figure for the general support program. Because research and development is a very important field for the future development. And under the fourteenth five-year plan, we have seen a positioning of Hong Kong as a arts culture development hub. So do you have a better a scheme to attract more people to use such programs? We also want to see more success coming out of such projects. In innovation and technology, we lack the reading material, but then the government does not have any elaborate response on setting up a ebook platform. How can we set up a ebook platform specifically targeted for Hong Kong? Thank you. Well, this is actually a focus of work on the side of the government. We are providing support in a financial support and in Science Park and Cyberport. In our budget, we have clearly stated that we would promote this under the fourteen-five-year plan to enhance the exchange between Chinese and Western culture. So there is support for organizations to work with our I T companies. There would be a sort of matching support. Because both sides need to understand each other, otherwise they would not know how to apply technology in their work if they're not, because some are not familiar with what the other side does. So we need to provide a platform for interchange, and this is what we are working on currently. I hope that through such a matching and identifying partnership will be able to enhance our support. Otherwise, you would not see you would not be able to support the enterprises and organizations. And this is something we are supporting at this current moment. How about the other part for the ebook platform? It's actually the same. When we see a demand, well, this is not something which is of high-tech use, but we just need to ensure that we are able to match enterprises or organizations. Dr. Chan Yuheng, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. I'd like to follow up on I T B four four nine, which is my own question. On the strategic tech fund. So the government stated that five billion would be used to set up the strategic tech fund to invest in technology enterprises and projects which are of strategic value to Hong Kong. However, the response was really brief. Well, this is a five-billion strategic tech fund, and I see that other members have also asked about that, which shows its importance. The five-billion strategic tech fund will be invested in enterprises and projects which are of strategic value to Hong Kong. So how do you define that? Would that be a digital technology? What kind of technology? There, there are no details. How do you manage this fund? Do you need to invite tender? And would you be able to actually use this to work on other areas as well? I also like to follow up on Mr. Duncan Chiu's I T B O O six on the nurture ship of professionals. So we are also very concerned with the I T talents in Hong Kong. We do lack talents. Because those who know finance do not know about I T, and it's the same on the reverse. Therefore, we lack such talents in future in order to strengthen Hong Kong's positioning as a financial hub. Will need to invest more in talent. This is a strategic issue. And also something we need to make sure to enhance our competitiveness in the future. So there are new courses on I T. What plans do you have? I think in the next five years, how, how many I T talents have you nurtured for the financial sector? And what are your plans for the future development? Thank you, Dr. Ten, for your questions. First of all, on the strategic tech fund, this is a five-billion fund. And in the budget, it is defined as a fund investing in technology enterprises and projects which are of strategic value, and it must be of considerable scale. There are many funds under the government. And we provide support for many new projects, but then we lack those on a considerable six scale. Therefore, the strategic tech fund is targeted on enterprises which have investment of considerable scale. And we want to look into more development And uh we want to look into more development in in no life. And health tech. Through this strategic tech fund, we also want to attract. Industries in to Hong Kong and must also. Work together with. Uh with good development potential. We are going to also work with the Treasury. On that, and we'll be able to report this further on a separate occasion.
On Mister Tan, actually a few universities are doing this because they know that we need a fintech. Times, uh their courses they run are very popular, so continue to liaise with them. So that they can uh engage in training more. Mister Lam So Lo, thank you. I'd like to follow up on my own question, I T P oh five eight on auditing. According to the reply. The relevant policies and scope of uh the businesses will be divided into uh different groups. And uh consultants with the right experience will carry out a three-month audit. My understanding. Is that the audit will focus on services and systems. My greatest consideration or concern is. Uh the um interface. Among these systems in particular, in area of urban management. I'd like to know whether these systems are interconnected and can we set up sort of a genuine, a central database? Because. Some bureaus. And uh departments may tell us that they have a central database, but that only applies to their own departments or bureau. Not the government as a whole, so if the audit is done on different groups. Will it consider the uh connectivity of different services and systems? And if the answer is yes, oh well, uh if there is uh no such consideration. I hope the secretary can pay attention to this part. And the audit work will be completed in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. I'd like to know whether after each audit, there can be immediate improvement. Otherwise, if we have to wait for three years before we can see improvements. Now, technology is about raising of time. And if we have to wait for three years before, for instance, we can improve our uh. Fight against the pandemic, this is too late. No, 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 uh we will not wait until all uh audit is completed before we enhance our. Systems, you're very correct, Mister Lam. We cannot afford to wait, to wait, so after each audit worker in uh two or three or four months' time, we will carry out the relevant upgrade. And how we can ensure connectivity? This is an important point. And therefore, uh the uh service will be a user-oriented. If different departments are providing similar services and serving uh the same uh client groups, then. Will consolidate the services. And this is what Mister Lam meant by ensuring connectivity. And uh. Connectivity of databases. As I said, uh the uh technology aside, there is also uh legislative consideration. So we will have to deal with this as well, so. We need the technology to ensure connectivity, but we may have to. Ask for logical support for a legislative amendment. Thank you. Uh Doctor Sun Dong. Doctor Sun Dong. I'd like to plot my own two questions. Uh one is I T P oh two five, another is uh I T B oh two five. Now, we um the friend, the fund uh will uh support universities. And I think they are very important. The I T fund has been very important. And uh we have uh must spend more than ten billion dollars in uh in our tag. And what about um projects for the um? Small and medium-sized uh projects. We have very outstanding. Small and medium-sized R and D teams, they are very strong and. Some of them have gone to develop in domain and so for research teams with potential, I think we should step up. Support for them. Now, uh to retain talents in Hong Kong. While the government has launched a lot of programs, I understand that they are not uh very effective. I think you don't understand that we have uh some uh disincentives for talents to stay in Hong Kong. For instance, we are the most attractive to I N T talents, we do not have um. An ambitious uh plan, for instance, are these talents will have to pay uh more tax in property purchase, so they are. Not interested to stay, I think we should show them some sincerity to let them know uh that we want to keep them in Hong Kong. Thank you. Under the I N T fund. We have uh different schemes. To support R and D in particular for smaller and a medium-scale projects, we do support them. And. Our universities are also given support under the U G C. We will review our I N T fund in the near future to see how it can be improved. On the nineteenth of April, we're going to uh report to the council. Uh the current situation of various funds as for attracting I N T talent, Doctor Sun is very correct. We have from. Face, we have seen uh various challenges in Hong Kong and we will. Trying to attract talents. At various levels, but we should not consider Hong Kong as a city alone, we should um optimize the G B A development. Hong Kong enjoy advantages, but then I N T talents in Hong Kong must see. Development opportunities, which for sure will be in G B A. So we should make use of the various I N T institutions and even enterprises in G B A. So that these talents can carry out R and D in Hong Kong. And they can leverage the advantages of G B A to commercialize their R and D products. I think this is a good opportunity to attract talent, even if we provide the necessary support. If but there is no room for further development, they are not interested to come to Hong Kong. They want development opportunities, they do not come to Hong Kong just for an easy life. Mister Lee Wei, I'm was speaking after that, uh our time will uh. Be up, uh but I will give the floor to Mister Johnny as well, so please be succinct, Mister Lee. I took up on a reply oh three four, let me declare interest, I uh the company, my company once um applied for. The um technology voucher, actually SMEs and need support from the government, given. The pandemic, uh uh each company is given up to six hundred thousand dollars in subsidy. This is very useful, but then. Very often, they um cannot succeed in getting the full amount of six hundred thousand dollars. So I'd like to raise some issues according to the reply. The success rate is over ninety percent, and then there is a performance pledge of sixty days. But I don't think on that uh doesn't reflect the full picture because uh some applications have withdrawn because of the cumbersome procedures. And uh some companies were required to um supply some. Uh documents and they were required to queue up again. So can you um adjust the application requirements? So that they don't have to start anew, even they were only short of some minor documents. And can you relax the criteria so that more members from the sector can take part? And for unsuccessful cases, is there any revenue avenue for appeal so that they can be successful next time? Some of the uh requirements are hard to fulfill. For instance, uh some agreements, they are required to sign, etc. Can you relax the requirements, please? The P S can take this question. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Lee. If I suggest to uh supply the necessary documents. I think they will be given, uh say, a few weeks to submit the missing documents. They don't have to start anew. It's only if a company uh cannot. Provide the documents after the deadline that I it uh would be rejected, but even though. The application is a failure, the company can always apply again, there is no need for an appeal mechanism. A company can reapply at any time and uh for unlimited number of times. So it's just like an appeal mechanism, a fresh application can always be renewed. As we discussed, that statement that there will be no uh price fixing, this is necessary because. We've consulted. Our lawyers. As well as the I C A C. In formulating the scheme, because at the past few years, we've seen cases of price fixing. So uh signing such an agreement is necessary. So if there is no price fixing, I think it's perfectly okay for these applicants to assign the agreement or statement. From the government's point of view, we would like the scheme to uh help our SMEs. So in terms of uh the number of um. Companies that can benefit, well, uh we've already improved the system. A ninety-five percent of them are SMEs and we've approved a total funding of about one point two six billion dollars. We'll continue to improve the plan. Mister Johnny, thank you. Like to plot on my own question, reply oh one nine. This is about the uh digital. Economy Committee. Now, we are um. We're not too sure about the uh timetable. Digital Economy Development Committee uh can involve um many aspects. And are the um. What are we going to do to um work on uh the value of digital information? And the second question is about I N T and R and D. Uh we have various measures to support our N D, such as tax concessions, whether. A place has R and D will depend on the uh percentage of a G D B attributable to R and D. I'd like to know whether we have any statistics in this regard.
Thank you, Doctor, for your two questions. Uh we must try to brainstorm and focus more on this development in digital economy. How can Hong Kong uh step up? Its development in digital economy, and that's the reason why we set up the Digital Economy Development Committee. We'll have to wait till the D E D C has been set up before we are able to report to members on this development. On performance indicators. We are trying to set up from the top tier, how to work on further digitalization. We are looking into different performance indicators other than G D P figures. We are also working on this as well. Thank you for your comments. So we are able to conclude this session on time. The next session will begin at three fifty-five.